Scott Gergen.
Here.
Lisa Vadeen.
Here.
Teresa Moos here, Les Roloff.
Here.
Vince O'Brien.
Here.
Superintendent Collins.
Here.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda for tonight? Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Agenda approved. Motion to approve the minutes from the following meetings.
I'll motion.
Well, second.
Any discussion on those? Motion approved. Motion to approve the bills payable.
I'll move to pay the bills.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. And good news.
Great news. Dave Haveman. Come on up. I know that I shared this with school board members back in September, but Dave couldn't be here, but it was such great news that I wanted to make sure that he did come on an evening where the board could recognize him. We could recognize him right on TV again. You've been on TV a lot. Unity with community. You're a celebrity.
He's kind of a big deal.
We just want to keep you rolling, but Minnesota Department of Education, this is extremely rare. I don't know in my 20 some years, I don't think I've ever been in a school district where such a high recognition has been given. And I told Dave I laughed. My name was on this as superintendent of the school and Dave Haveman. It was totally Dave Haveman and his staff, but it was definitely his leadership. We polled some of our paperwork through due process and there were zero citations on that paperwork. And just to give you an idea of how unbelievable that is, they could list up to probably 130.
134 citations, possible citations per IP.
Per IP. So that's how many things that a person could do wrong in IP. And so that lets you know that Dave, in due diligence through our entire staff, did a remarkable job. And so it's my honor to recognize you and congratulate you on behalf of the. Great job, Dave. And Dave, as always, you can exit stage left or right.
I might just.
Yeah, because we know our board meetings are exciting, but you might have some other things going on. With that, also, we invite in chairs and we're going to try and get more regular about that. And they can just come and sit with us and talk about what's going on. They can do a PowerPoint presentation. They can do handouts, or they can just tell us about their program, or they can do whatever they want.
Don't really do PowerPoint.
So with that.
Chair on the other side of Vince's chair.
Here, no, why don't you guys go sit here and I'll sit on the side or whatever.
I like the camera one.
Yeah. Yeah, so just tell us a little bit about what's going on.
So thanks so much for inviting us. I think it's really important that people understand what we do. A few years ago, at the middle school, during our department or monthly meetings, staff meetings, every department presented something about their department. And it was really helpful to see what other departments do. And if you don't do it every day, you don't really know what goes on in your school. And so, and a lot of people don't know what goes on in the music department, how it's set up, how it works. And I think that's a really good thing for everybody to know. So first of all, last week was kind of a showcase for Hastings Middle School at the Veterans Day Program. I don't know if any of you were there, but we had a really excellent program. And we had a lot of people, community, veterans, and it was just really cool. Our middle school kids were extremely excited to be part of that. And I, my kids were the quietest and best they'd ever been. So they were really proud to play, proud to perform. I know all the orchestra and the choir kids were really proud. And so I think that was a great showcase. We had 160 singing in the choir. We had 67 in the band. And I think there were like 30, 80, 40 in the orchestra. So the whole front of the stage was set up. And it was just a really cool thing to honor our veterans. So that was kind of a showcase for us last week. What I did here is I just kind of put down the numbers that we have at our school. And our school enrollment is 1,376. And so I just did a percentage of students in each band, choir, and orchestra, how many students participate. I actually tabulated, there's 1,034 students enrolled in music. Now, some of those are doubled, but out of 1,376, 1,034 students are taking one or two music classes. I think I figured out it was hard to totally do this, but about 25% of those students are taking band and choir or orchestra and choir. So it's a really important thing in our school. And students really like it. And I'm just going to speak to how, try not to read too much of this, but how our classes are set up. In the band program, when we switched to fifth grade coming to the middle school, we're really fortunate to have homogeneous instrument classes, which means that all the flutes meet at one time, all the saxophones meet at one time, all the trumpets meet at one time. And you can just work on the pedagogy of starting an instrument that way. If you can imagine having 92 kids sitting in front of you and none of them had played an instrument before, it's kind of. And so it's really, really helpful. And the students progress at a really good rate because they're there for class. And you can work on the fundamentals of that particular instrument. And then as they get going through the year, the fifth graders then meet once a week with their full band. But I've noticed since we started, the growth in our instruments, instrument performance, just because the students have more time spending directly on their instrument. And they meet for a full period every three days. And I think it does a lot of good for our students. All the bands, we have that fifth grade, then we have a sixth grade band, we have a seventh grade band, an eighth grade band. And all the sixth through eighth grade students, in addition to band, have nine pull-out lessons per year. And those are taught in individual lessons, 10 minutes each. I'd like them to be a lot longer, but it's just impossible with the time constraints. But the private one-on-one attention really helps our students grow. And so that's a really valuable thing that we're allowed to do. And all the bands give three concerts, performances per year. The older groups sometimes attend festivals. It just depends on what's available, the timing. And so we try to take our groups out to perform other places as well. And then we also have a jazz band program that's really popular. We have 81 schools in three jazz bands. We have sixth grade, seventh grade, and eighth grade jazz band. And they meet once a week on Wednesdays. And we have our annual jazz night in April, which is one of the most popular events of the year. It's one of the kids' favorite things that they do. So that's it. Kind of how our band classes are structured. For chorus, there are, as you see here, three fifth grade choirs, three sixth grade choirs, and they meet, boys and girls, and they perform together. They meet separately, but perform together for concerts. Our older students, our seventh and eighth graders, are gender separated. And this is something I'm really jealous of, because I would just really like to have all girls one time in a group. Or even all boys one time in a group. Because as you all know, they act so differently. And it's amazing when I watch the girls choir, how much they get done. And I watch the boys' choir, and they also get a lot done, but in a way different way. They really do. But it really is amazing. And truly, the quality of the choir is because they are gender separated. If you have, if you put a bunch of girls and boys together in seventh and eighth grade, they have many other things on their mind besides singing. And when they're separate, they focus on that task. And sometimes they get together. For the Veterans Day, they got together and I went into the rehearsal that they were having for Veterans Day. And it was the first time that the girls had sung with the boys, or vice versa. And it was really interesting. And there was just a lot of, whoa, whoa, what's going on? I'm used to it. But the gender separation is a really awesome thing that we're allowed to do. And it truly does make a huge difference in our choir program. And then there's also Spiral Singers, which is an audition select group of 38 seventh and eighth grade students. And they perform at concerts, and then they perform, they did the children's, helped at the children's orchestra concert the other night. And they just do different things around the community. The fifth and sixth grade choirs do two concerts a year, and then the older students do three a year. And note of good news, 12 students from seventh and eighth grade were recently selected to be in the ACDA Honor Choir, which will be performing this Saturday in Monamita. Is that where it is? Yes, we had 12 students selected. Lots of boys, lots of boys. So it's really cool. And then the orchestra program. The orchestra program at the middle school has three basic classes. She has her beginning class or four classes. The beginning strings is just anybody who wants to start out. And it's open to five through eight, mostly fifth graders, but there are some six and older students as well. And that's just to begin the basic of strings, kind of like we do with our flute and trumpet classes. String Tech 2 is for the intermediate students, the students that have had a year or two of experience, but they're not quite ready to play full orchestra music. So they're enrolled in that class. That's also graded sixth through eighth grade. And then the orchestra is the most experienced players. And they perform orchestral literature as an ensemble. They're the ones that travel to different places. And they were the group that performed at our Veterans Day concert. And then they also have an honors orchestra, which Mary Ellen Fox directs. And they meet once Thursday mornings before school. And again, they do lots of special events. And they do lots of performances. I think they also have three concerts a year. And as Andrea wrote here, that they go to the American String Association String Camp, they go to a festival. They just start participating in a lot of different things. And I think Andrea, I asked her to, you know, tell me a little bit about her program, because she can do it better than I. And the last thing applies to all of us, what we teach in our performance music classes is 21st century skills. Critical thinking, communication, collaboration, and creativity. Who doesn't want someone that has all those skills to work for them or be in their group? And you know, a middle school kid, middle school is a different breed, but there is so much creativity in those students. It's absolutely amazing. And the things they come up with is just crazy and fun. And they're just a lot of fun to work with. And when you can get them to focus, they work really hard, and they really want to do a good job. And I think they do. So. And I just have to add one thing, because I have to say this. I went to a workshop this summer, and the guy said, you know, is how do you make a good, really good music program? And he said the number one thing is, don't make excuses. So that's really, I totally agree with that, but it's really hard to not make excuses. And so the one thing that is frustrating is having it every third day. And I know when we went to the sixth period day, part of the thing was, do we want kids to be in band and choir? Is that important? Yes, it's very important. So what happens if we decide that they just have to pick? Which they do in a lot of schools. But if you look at all the musicians over all the years that both Lynn and I have taught here, all the top kids in band, I mean, they're the top kids in music, are both in band and choir. And they learn from each other. They experience such great things. And I just can't imagine a kid that wants to do both things not being able to. So that is crucial. That is crucial. But that being said, it's very difficult when you meet every third day. And sometimes it's only once a week. Sometimes, like this week, I don't see eighth graders at all. And that's because of Eagle Bluff. But it's really difficult to get the camaraderie. And that's what I feel like I've lost the most, is the camaraderie of our groups. And it just takes longer to get it. I felt like with our Veterans Day thing, we kind of got, we kind of came together and chilled as a group. But yeah, that's just the most frustrating part about doing it every three days. And I don't really have an answer. It's just a comment. So.
Well, now you're really going to find out who's the most articulate speaker, explaining us back to back. And it's not me. So I asked Andrea and Jim to write out a little something for me, so that I make sure I cover all of the topics they wanted me to. And some of the things that Andrea said were similar to what Kathy had mentioned. There are two main orchestras at the high school. One is the Hastings High School Orchestra that meets third hour. And that's, most freshmen begin their high school music career in the orchestra in that class. And they introduce intermediate to advanced level playing techniques and just continue to hone their skills through guided practice. Concertino meets zero hour before school. And it's the advanced ensemble. And they perform a number of select works from standard orchestral repertoire throughout the year. The other thing that Andrea really stresses is to ensure that the orchestra students have a vision of themselves as adult musicians, perhaps playing in a college orchestra, or a semi-professional orchestra, or a community orchestra. And so to do that, they do a lot of collaborative type concerts and have clinic sessions. One of the things they've done is bringing the Royal Strings Quartet, which is adult professional musicians, and have clinic sessions. And so they do breakouts and those musicians work with the different instrument groups. They also have performances with the combined members of the Hastings High School Concertino and Ponticelli, which is the Hastings area adult community string ensemble. I think that's a great opportunity for them to see themselves perhaps continuing to play after they graduate, or perhaps graduate from college. And then she also brings in quite a few different guest clinicians. Kristin Chernoway from River Falls. She's brought her in. And then Dr. Daniel Baldwin, who conducted the Luther College Symphony Orchestra. She did that last year. And then she listed a number of other clinicians that she has brought in over the course of the last couple of years. Some of the main performance events, last year, we had the Veterans Day Program. And I have to jump on what Kathy said. It's a highlight for the students. And in this day and age, when you wouldn't think patriotism is strong, is with kids anyway, it's really quite the opposite. They really take a lot of pride in that. And so that event, whether, wherever it's at, is really important to the students and then obviously to the community. So then they always do the children's concert, which was on Monday night, which is always great fun. And some great people doing some of the dialogue and reading the books. And then the all-district orchestra concert. And then they have the recruitment event, events like the instrument demo concert and instrument fair as well. They do some Christmas caroling in Regina. And there are soloists and ensembles that perform in solo ensemble contest as well. They also have a big mentorship program where each of the entire orchestra works in the annual intro to instruments. That's when they bring the fourth grade over to the high school. And they volunteer to help the fourth graders try out the instruments also at the instrument fair. And I think everything else Kathy covered, with the exception of the travel opportunities at the high school. Some of the recent trips that they've had are Germany, Austria, France, and Italy. And this March, the travel to Spain. And I think those are the main things. Also, we have, they have opportunity for some advanced playing. The Dorian Orchestra Festival, last year Maria Ross was selected. And then this year, for the Minnesota All-State Orchestra, Krista Gomez was selected for that as well. So then moving on to Jim and the band program. They have three curricular course offerings. Varsity Band, which is ninth graders, Concert Band, and Wind Ensemble. And all the band students at the high school receive a 15-minute private lesson every two weeks to continue to develop their individual skill set. And despite the declining school enrollment, our band enrollment numbers continue to rise, increasing 27% in the last five years, which is great. The co-curricular band offerings include Jazz I, Jazz II, Marching Band, Pep Band, Percussion Ensemble. Other performance opportunities include playing the wind parts in the orchestra and also the percussion parts. He called it Show Choir Winds, which is Bub backup band for the show choir and percussion. And also, we have a lot of high school musicians that are able to play in the pit for the musicals. They do solos and ensembles for the contest. And then they have the opportunity, as I said before, to go on the spring break music performance tour, which this year is in Spain. They continually have multiple students selected to participate in region, state, and college honor bands of the Midwest. Already this year, six upper-class students were selected and participated in Winona, St. Olaficus Davis Honor Bands. And recently, 13 of our band members were selected to the Metro East Conference Honor Band. Our all-state banner member received the first part for stand as a junior. And we continually have multiple students selected for the state-level 9-10 Honor Band. After raising the bar, now I'm moving on to the co-curricular aspect. Competition last year, the marching band was a three-time state champion. This year, it received third place in the state. And they had their largest group ever with 47 freshmen involved, which I think is amazing. And the band made a steady and remarkable progress throughout the season and finished out strong. Membership in our two jazz ensembles has grown 40% over the past two years as well. And those ensembles continue to raise the level of achievement, although competition is not what it was, is the most important part of the jazz groups. Our Jazz Ensemble I scored in the high 80s at this last year's Eau Claire Jazz Festival. Also, 80% of our percussion students participate in the co-curricular percussion ensemble. And that meets in the mornings at 7:00. And is dedicated to preparing and performing music written specifically for percussion instruments. And Jim does that. And also John Schwalstrom, a former student of ours, comes and helps and really enjoys that. He also helps quite a bit with the marching band. And then the Pep Band is just getting started. And they're a group of instruments that play for hockey, basketball, and wrestling events. And it's completely voluntary, but the kids really enjoy that. And there's huge participation in that. And then he finishes saying, although curricular bands are the pillar of our band program, we're excited about the increased level of excellence in enrollment in all of our curricular and co-curricular bands, including all the curricular and co-curricular ensembles. We have 326 positions in the band at HHS. We're honored to carry on the strong music tradition in Hastings, and that's only made possible by strong community, school board, and administrative support. And he wants to thank you for that. Then mine. This was exhausting to write. When Deanna called me, it was like, sir, I've never just put this down on a piece of paper. And when I finished, I was like, gee. So, but here we go. The vocal music department has 529 students singing in one or more of the 10 choirs. Two of the four audition choirs are Valcanto Singers, which is our upper-level select women, and the Select Corral, our select mixed ensemble. They rehearse every day for 48 minutes. And while the other two, Concert Choir, which is our audition sophomore mixed chorus, and Women's Chorus, which is non-audition, rehearse every other day. Then our freshman-level choirs are Men's Chorus. And I add sophomore men to that as well. And then Freshmen Women's Chorus, which is obviously all freshmen. They're non-audition. Anyone can join them. And they rehearse every other day. We also have a Vocal Jazz Ensemble and three show choirs that are co-curricular part of our program. And they rehearse approximately twice a week outside of the school day. Kathleen Hansen, one of my colleagues, she directs Concert Choir, Freshmen Women's Chorus, and the Vocal Jazz Ensemble. Women's Chorus, Valcanto, and our adaptive special needs music class are directed and taught by Tatum Malin. And I direct Men's Chorus, Select Corral, and Riverside Company, which is our varsity show choir. In addition, we all teach voice lessons on our periods that we don't have class. And I'll talk a little bit more about that later. We have two non-staff members that direct the other two show choirs, Michelle Braun, who directs Upstage Revolution, and Megan Quinn, who directs the Divas. All of our curricular choirs and vocal jazz perform four sold-out concerts each year. The Fall Concert, two holiday concerts, which we're preparing for now, on Saturday, December 19th, our Winter Concert, and our Spring Show, which is a fully choreographed stage production. In addition to our home concerts, Select Corral has been selected to sing three times at the Minnesota Music Educators Conference, once at the Music Educators Divisional Conference, twice at the Fall Minnesota Choral Director State Conference, once at the Dorian Vocal Festival at Luther College, twice at the Minnesota Choral Directors Choral Arts Finale at Orchestra Hall. And finally, they'll be making their second appearance at the Hosanna Holiday Concert on December 10th and 12th of this year, where they'll be singing with the Minnesota Orchestra. We did that last year, and we were excited to be asked again. Incredible opportunity for those students to be able to sing with the Minnesota Orchestra. That's just not something that high school students get the opportunity to do very often. Men's Chorus has also been selected to sing twice at the Minnesota Music Educators Conference and sings the National Anthem at the Timberwolves game yearly. We've already done that this year. We sang Thursday, November 5th. And also, Men's Chorus will be making their very first appearance at the Fall Minnesota Choral Director State Conference this Saturday at St. Andrews Lutheran Church in Monamita. They're one of the three high school men's choruses that are selected to join college and semi-professional men's groups from the state in a male chorus celebration concert. Now, you have to submit a tape of last year's Men's Chorus at the end of the year. And so it's a big risk to do this with incoming freshmen, two-thirds of the choir I'd never seen before. I didn't even know whether they matched pitch. Fortunately, most of them do, because it's hard to get them around. And again, rehearsing every other day, they have to work on a lot of skills. So it's going to be an incredibly exciting opportunity for them. In addition to their solo performance, they'll be joining all the other Men's Choruses for an opening and closing number with nearly 900 men singing together. So it should be immense and really, really exciting. Now, going on to the co-curricular parts of our program, our three show choirs will begin their competitive season in January, and with our home preview show on Monday, January 4th at 7:00. Riverside Company begins competing the following Saturday at Ankeny High School in Iowa, followed by Anawaska, Wisconsin, and then Omaha West Side. Upstage and Divas then join us at the Eau Claire Competition, then Concertino Grace. Then Riverside finishes their season at Wheaton Warrenville High School in the Chicago area. We host our own show choir competition, as you probably know, Swinging on the River, on February 27th, with 19 competing choirs and our three choirs performing an exhibition. Riverside Company has had great success over the last few years, winning caption awards for Best Vocals, Best Choreography, Best Band, and multiple grand championships. Over the last three years, they have placed third, second, and fifth at the national competition. Our department consistently gets the maximum number of students allowed into all-state choir, which is six. And every year, we have many students selected for the ninth and 10th grade all-state choirs. And this year, we just received the results today, and we had nine singers selected, which is great. And we consistently bring in clinicians to work with our singers. One of the ones that we bring in every year, her name is Dina Else, and who is probably the nation's best vocal technician and pedagogue. And she works with all the choirs. And we gender separate the young men and the young women, just because it works better. It's very similar to what Kathy said. They're two different animals when it comes to instruments and voices. And it really makes a lot of sense. And they grow so much when she's there, just for those three days. And then also, we bring in a lot of college choirs. And we have many former high schools, college, high school singers singing in them. And this is great for our students to see the opportunity to sing to college, and also rewarding for us to see the huge number of our kids that sing in college choirs after they graduate. Actually, tomorrow, the UW Eau Claire Concert Choir will be singing for Select Corral. And one of our former students, Joe Ponslip, sings in that ensemble. I think the keys to the success of our program are very supportive administration, staff, and community, and that understand the importance of arts in making a well-rounded and fully educated student. Second, our lesson program allows any student who wants to study voice privately with Kathleen Tatum R.I. the opportunity to do so at no cost. This helps build individual solo voices that in turn contribute and color the choirs that they sing in. Finally, student choice to be in our ensembles and participation in the lesson program would not be possible without the seventh period day, is a crucial schedule for a comprehensive high school rich with elective offerings like Hastings High School. If I have any frustrations at all, it's probably more personal than anything else. And it's the administrative aspect of it. Bill paying and all that goes along with it. Of my job, in addition to all my teaching responsibilities, it can be really, really overwhelming. I often don't get deposits and bills paid in the requested time, because I have to block off lesson times in order to work on paying bills and money issues. And yep, I just feel my main job should be to teach kids not to be an accountant. But the good news is my mom was an accountant, so I watched her do it. But it's quite different now. So, but that's my one frustration. But all in all, I think we've worked hard to develop a program that provides tremendous opportunities for gifted and talented students, and also a place to belong and feel successful for many students that don't have anything positive going on in their lives. And sadly, we have a lot of those.
Many students come to school only for their music, which is also sad, but it's very true. That's what their highlight of their day is.
It's both sad and makes us happy. So that's all I have.
So what percentage of students want those individual voice lessons?
For coral?
Yeah.
It is probably 60% of them.
Are they required to have them?
Nope. Nope. I mean, they're required some, so like our second and third quarter, that is, we call it our vocal performance program. So then they sign up when there's an open spot. And they're fighting over the lesson times, their 20-minute lessons. And for a lot of different reasons. Some of them just want to be a better singer. A lot of them want to work on solos to prepare for college auditions. And you can get scholarships for that. And many of them, being in Riverside is really important. And they know by working on their individual voice, because it's a singing ensemble first. And it just happens to be a singing ensemble that dances. So they know that their vocal skills are the main thing that's going to get them in to those top groups, Select and Valcanto and Riverside.
I was just wondering mathematically how that would work. Because with the number of students that you have, and those that would probably want the lessons.
It's crazy. When we get to solo ensemble contest, we all accompany our own students. I am often, probably like, you know better than I, six, seven, eight times, I'm playing two solos at the same time. Not, well, I have to run from one room to the other. I'm not doing this. Not, well, I have to run from one room to the other, I'm not doing this. But, it's just because there's so much interest in, and, I mean, it's a risk to sing for a judge, but they know it's a growth experience.
I just wanted to echo what you had said about the Veterans Day program. I had the opportunity to be there and to also talk about it on the radio, and I shared how impressive it was to come into the middle school and see that many students not only involved, but also thirteen-hundred-and-eighty students or whatever, just with the utmost respect. It was a great day to have our community come into the middle school. It was extremely, extremely impressive, so. Questions or thoughts from board members?
I have one, or two. You know, Kathy, you said that you break them down by instruments? How long have you been doing that?
Since they started fifth grade at the middle school.
Okay, and, I know, but how long, like, how many years have you been breaking it down, where they're just, you know, you bring in the?
Oh, yeah, well, that would have been, let's see, the kids that are now?
Ninth graders.
Ninth graders, because, yeah, Charlie wasn't it? The kids that are ninth graders were the first group to experience that.
Yeah, I think that's great. And then I just have one other question. The eighth grade, you know, we gave us some of the numbers, what happened? You know, you see some, you know, what happens in eighth grade, where maybe some of the numbers go down a little bit?
There's many reasons.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, there's been, kids get other interests, number one. A lot of kids, you know, they have other interests. Some of them discover, well, they, you know, they don't want to work that hard to do that, because they have other things they'd like to do. You know, there's just, there's a long, I could write a long list of reasons.
I didn't know if there was something with scheduling that maybe that happened?
No, it's not a scheduling issue. It's a preferential issue of, you know, and some of them realize it's not for them anymore. You know, they see where their friends are going, and they say, oh, I can't do that, so maybe they don't have the desire.
Okay, all right.
A couple observations on your frustrations. First, thank you both, and you're like, I'm working day and night constantly and so on, as your whole department. You're all doing a wonderful job. On the, on the collecting the money and fees and all that sort of thing, I've been talking to other people who've gone through the same audits we go through, they have the same exact findings all the time. It's always in the areas where you got someone, basically, they're teaching by day and doing these activities at night, collecting money, when's the bank open, you know, all the sort of thing. And so, I do think that, you know, we have to look at getting some systems in place that best support that. I know that we have been doing that, trying to make that part easier, so that we can get, was it, one year, we didn't even have any findings, which was great. It was like, put us in an unusual position with districts. So, as much as you don't care for that aspect, you're doing a good job according to, you know, if we compare to other districts.
I have to write a lot of notes why the bill was paid late.
Me too.
And it's usually, I didn't have time to get to the bills, you know, so.
It found its way under my pile. I'm not sticking notes.
I didn't even mention counting money from fundraisers. That's a whole other thing, that's what we used to do.
So, we'll try to give you the support to make things better, not worse. And then on the rotation of every third day, that, you know, that came with the sixth-period day, you know, I definitely was aboard in working with the middle school. I think that we need to look at that, see how, you know, we're new to that schedule, and we need to look at what's working and what's not. And so, it's good to get that feedback about, you know, I could see if you're only meeting every third day, there's some weeks that you're only getting that group together one day that week, and I could see where that would be kind of frustrating. And so, I think that's something we should probably look at when we're, Kathy, doing some analysis of how this is going. It's good feedback, yeah, thank you.
Anything else from board members? Well, as always, we appreciate the time that it takes to come here and prepare for this and the tremendous amount of work that you've put into the programs. And we really, we as a board have seen the benefits for many, many years of your hard work and your high-level professional integrity. So, thank you, what you brought to our students and our community, so thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are you sure?
Yes.
I just want to echo some of the things that have been said, and just, when you go to the choir concert for Christmas, you notice different things. And it's a real tribute to the music program. Near the back of auditorium, always now, I notice older people who are grandparents watching their grandchildren. And they usually sit quietly, and they're very, they cry, and they're very emotional as they watch their kids perform. And it's wonderful art. The profound impact you guys have made system-wide with the music departments throughout are a gift for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Sorry about that.
No problem. I didn't like that. And I don't know if they're going to tag team or not, or if Mary's here as support. Okay, so.
I'm an observer.
But with that, I'm going to invite up Jim Reichel, as all of you know, Jim is our Director of Teaching and Learning. Also, by law, we have to give a report on World's Best Workforce annually, and so Jim is here to lead us through that report. And as I shared with you as board members, this presentation might be different next year, because Jim comes in in the midstream or almost the end of one year and is trying to share with you data on World's Best Workforce, on some of the things that she quite honestly wasn't involved with. And I think that will always happen whenever there's a transition year, so. Jim, with that, I'll turn it over, and I know that you had this technology working earlier today, because I was in here when you were getting it all loaded.
Is this one where we need the lights?
Yeah, we might. Joe, right behind you.
Well, thank you for allowing me to be here and share about World's Best Workforce tonight. Do I need to turn this on?
No, your voice carries for me.
You agree. Okay, great. So, tonight, here's what we're going to talk about. What is World's Best Workforce? I know that some of you may know, but it's great to build that foundation, so that we all have a common understanding of what is World's Best Workforce. And then we're going to ask, answer the following questions. What are the goal areas set by the state? What are our goals? And how are we doing? And then, clearly, there will be time for questions at the end. So, when we talk about World's Best Workforce, it is designed by the state. And in 2013, there was a bill passed that said, hey, we want our school districts to create a plan to create a great workforce. And so, they have really talked about, what is it that's going to take us to that next level of a workforce? And one of our responsibilities is to make sure that we provide these results on our website to our community and to do a public meeting like this. So, that's why I'm here, to help you understand. So, the state defines five areas where we need to create goals. Readiness for kindergarten is one of the areas that our third graders can read at grade level, that we look at how we continually decrease that achievement gap between our racial groups, that our students are ready for college and career, and that we graduate our students from high school. And so, we have, what I'm recording on are the goals that were set in place last year and the results from last year. So, I'm giving out information tonight. So, for us, we set as a baseline goal that students, all of our students will be academically ready for kindergarten, as measured by this new assessment that was put into place last year, the Hastings Kindergarten Assessment Tool, the HCAT, or the CAT for short. And one of the things that we want to make sure that you know is that this was a new tool to us. And so, when we implemented that, we were collecting baseline data. So, the goal says, all of our students, we didn't have any idea of what was our baseline and what we increased from. So, our initial result is that fifty-two percent of our two-hundred-and-ninety-four kiddos who took that assessment met three benchmarks. The benchmarks are recognizing capital letters, recognizing lowercase letters, and knowing their letter sounds. And we can get to some more information later if you're interested. When it comes to third-grade literacy, we base our assessment on MCA scores. And so, the percentage of students meeting or exceeding those expectations on the third grade MCA will increase from sixty-four point four percent to sixty-six point four percent. Typically, when we look at growth, we want to look at that two-to-three, four percentage marks. We don't want to jump to the moon. We want to make steady progress. And when we look at the results, we saw that sixty-six point seven percent of our third graders met or exceeded, so we outperformed that goal that was set. So, really great work at our elementary schools. When we look at achievement gap, our goal was to increase from an average of fourteen point nine, nine-five points out of twenty-five to an average of eighteen out of twenty-five on a state measurement for achievement gap. There's a whole lot of data that the state puts out with Z-scores and achievement gap. And basically, we squished it all together and said, all right, here's a good measure. We want to just keep moving in a positive direction. And when we look at how we did last year, we did grow from fourteen nine, point nine-five to seventeen point eight-seven, so we were almost to our goal, which is really great progress for us to make. When we look at graduation rate, we want a hundred percent of our students to graduate within six years. It's really important to recognize that most of our kids are on a four-year trajectory, we go ninth to eleventh, twelve. But we need to take into account those students who typically on IEPs want to take advantage of extra education, and so that's why we look at that six-year mark. And when we look at data that the state puts out, they're always a year behind in the information, so we look at that 2012 to 2014, and in there, we made ninety-six percent of our students graduating within six years, which is really high compared to across the state. So, we're doing a great job there as well. And then finally, when it comes to college and career readiness, one of the things we look at is that portfolio that our juniors create, that really helps them examine their interests in where they want to go once they graduate. And so, the goal is a hundred percent of our juniors create this college and career portfolio, and we're happy to say a hundred percent of our juniors made those portfolios. So, that was a great thing. I want to take you to how we're going to share this information on our website. And one of the things that I did as I began this job in the fall was to create an infographic. I didn't want a text-heavy piece out there for our community. I want things that are super easy to, oop, back it up, super easy to connect with. So, I took a stab at doing something new and fun. So, this is our infographic, and what you'll see on here is really visually the numbers. And the great thing about an infographic is that you can click in and drill down into things. So, you'll find here, World's Best Workforce, and if we click on this, and I'm not going to click on everything tonight, one ends up on the website, feel free to dig deeper, but this will bring you to the Department of Ed and talk about what is the World's Best Workforce, so that if you or our families or our community want to learn more, this will get them there, and they don't have to go seek it out at the Department of Ed. I outline on here what are the five goal areas set by the state, and then I share our goals, same goals that I just shared with you, and then our pretty results with super easy, fun to get to. And so, one of the things that I want to show you about how this can drill down, is if we click here, and I'm going to, you know, by the magic of television, I already have it up here, I don't want to wait for us to get there, but if we clicked on this, we would get to kindergarten readiness. And so, this will talk about what are the benchmarks for the assessment that we did for our CAT assessment, and then the specific data about how many students met each of those benchmarks. And then we talk about what are the things that we did as a district to work toward improvement. And there's a page like this for each one of our goals, that just helps people understand the works in progress that we are doing in each of those areas.
Can I just ask a question on the HCAT?
Yes.
So, were these results from, did they take this in July, I believe, or August?
This was data that was collected and passed out last year, as I recall. So, yeah, the end of the year.
Okay.
Yep.
Good.
All right. So, that's what I have for you. What questions do you have about World's Best Workforce or any of our goals?
Thanks for doing this. With regard to the HCAT, and I think this is probably Angie's question, but is that being disseminated out to the area daycares and the kindergarten readiness programs in the community?
That's a super great question. And I know that, I know that there is some continuous work with collaborating with those other area preschool components out there. I'm not certain as to what sort of communication has happened. We're really trying to assess our own kiddos, but I know that when we do our CAT assessment and we're working on data right now, we do collect where do you come from as far as preschool, so that we can inform our pre-K program here.
Yeah, well, it's a numbers game. Of the two-hundred-and-ninety-four students, we probably have about thirty-five to forty in our program. And some of the other daycares, if we were to work with three or four of them, have a hundred eighty to two-hundred-twenty. So, and then there's all the other possibilities. But it just makes so much sense for us to enhance that collaboration and get the word out.
I do know, and I don't know if this happened yet to your question, but that is the goal, so that whether you're in a Robbins, a larger daycare, or even if you're doing a home daycare, you as a daycare preschool provider, you at least know what are our expectations. But I don't know yet if that information has been disseminated out there, so that they know where they're shooting as well. But I know that's the goal of the kindergarten readiness group.
Or to the parents.
I would say the parents would be probably, yeah. Then they can track too, yeah, my kids where everybody else is supposed to be.
But that's where they, so as we get that information to Robbins daycare, and they get it to the parents.
For the children who aren't doing that daycare.
Yeah, that's the difficult.
Yeah.
Because.
Those that we know.
Those that we know of. Yes, yes.
That's amazing.
Yeah.
But yet, those things will be accessible to the parents as well through the website, right?
Yes.
Yeah, they could just pop this page open and say, oh, here's our three.
It's always the communication, letting them know to try and get them.
Especially if it's the oldest kid in the family.
Yeah, I think that's the biggest thing too, because if you're a parent, if I know my kids don't know these things, and they're going to kindergarten a few months, well, shoot, I'm going to spend some time and make sure they're not the.
Hey, you've been writing these down?
No, they're going to be on the website.
What are the biggest challenges that you see?
As far as?
The five.
The five goal areas?
Five goals, yeah.
You know, one of the things that I'd like to see happen, which addresses that biggest challenge, is really to get a larger voice in defining the goals and creating the plan to get to achieving those goals. I think it's really easy to meet with a small core group and draft some goals and then kind of rely on status quo. And I think it's really important for us to make sure that these are communicated widely in our schools, and like you're talking about throughout the community, particularly with this kindergarten readiness one, so that everybody can take a hand at making forward progress.
I got a question, but one of, I forget what the statistics were for, it was just those fourteen points, oh, nine-five, of twenty-five, and I both got to eighteen, and we got real close. What do you attribute that increase to, it's about twenty percent or so, which is a huge improvement for year-over-year? What do they do that's different, or what have they interjected to get those results?
It's a great question. We can guess at what might have happened, and one of the things last year that you know is we implemented a readers writers workshop at our elementary model, at our elementary schools. And that time-on-task with literacy instruction is an incredible shift in how we do business in the classroom. And that guided reading, along with the whole group and the individual, are great ways to make sure that we're making progress at an individual student level. And I see that some of these increases are really directly related to that shift in the model of how we do literacy at the elementary school. I hope that as we continue through this path and teachers are becoming more and more comfortable with the workshop model, we will continue to see a steady increase in our data.
You probably mentioned this in your presentation, I didn't catch it, but how close are we to actually having this on the website?
After we connect tonight, it'll get there. I've already connected with Missy. I've already connected with Missy and she has the link and we just need to put it on the teaching and learning site.
Any other questions for Jim? Or if you want to shoot one at Mary, she's sitting here too. All right, well, thanks. Thanks again, Jen, very much appreciated.
Thank you.
And I really did like your, the infographic to me is, of course, how I like to look at things just to real quick, read them, and if I wanted to dive, I can. So I really, I liked that being the face out there where the public does look at it. So thank you for that work.
You're welcome.
And I really didn't have much else on my super tennis because I didn't know how long, how much time Jim was going to take. I didn't know how long Mary and Kathy were going to take. I just want to share just one item that came up today with all board members because you might hear about it. I did email Scott and Dan just because I know they're directly tied to the swim team. But we've had some issues with our diving platforms ever since we renovated the pool. One of the first little snafus was the fact that the regulations on the height away from the water, it was two inches too close to the water. So we had to weld and increase the platforms up two inches. And then after a while, after them being in for about a year, the diving platforms were loose. And so then Jim was instructed to re-wedge them. And that with all that pressure of shoving off of them on the design, the wedges over time. And so over the years, whenever our swim coaches or Kim from the swim team has said that they're loose, we go in and re-wedge. And at this past week, Jim was notified late last week, I want to say Friday, that one of them was very, very loose. And when he went in to wedge it yesterday, he couldn't re-wedge it tight. So now there's an assumption that down below the deck, that the cement down there is weakening, disintegrating, whatever word you want to say. So as you try to wedge it, you're wedging against something that's crumbled. So, and hey, swim team has every right to be frustrated. Kim's been very good about it, understanding that, hey, you can't fix something until it's broken. But then once it becomes broken and there's a huge meat coming up. And so just wanted to let you know about that because when it impacts over 400 swimmers coming into the community, there's a lot of frustration with that. I've seen emails flying back and forth from old and the subcontractors. And I know that somebody's coming here tomorrow to see if they can at least get it solidified for this weekend.
That'd be good. It's a six-lane pool. It's not an eight-lane pool, so.
Yeah, to begin with, it's a six-lane pool. So when you're having a competition, when other schools have an eight-lane pool, you need all six lanes or it really throws off your scheduling. And you don't want to be here until four in the morning, especially if you're officiating.
Well, they, yeah, they have rules around that, that you have to then start removing events. And it's a long story, but.
So I just wanted to let you, we're on top of it. But as I said to Kim today, it is broken and it might not have a fix to it. And so, and she's already starting to look at some other sites possibly. She's hoping as we are, that we can get it fixed for tomorrow. But we know that that won't be a long-term solution.
Yes, you know, we've had this problem. I just want to make sure people hear that almost all the feedback I'm getting on the renovation itself has been overwhelmingly positive.
It's so, the water quality, the air quality, so much better.
Right.
Yeah. So really, yeah. It was partially bad timing that we were able to get new diving. We were in dire need of new diving platforms before the renovation occurred. So then when the renovation occurred, we had these newish diving platforms where if you were normally doing a full renovation, you would have purchased everything all at the same time, just like we purchased the new, you know, long diving boards, et cetera, as the pool was deeper, so.
So anyway, I just wanted to let you all know as board members, in case you hear about it, which you might, and rightly so, because it is a, it's a huge event. And then this Scott knows because he has some children that are in the program. It's coming right around the corner here. So we want to keep working, whether or not it's a design flaw, whether or not it's a subcontractor, subcontractor flaw, bringing it to the bottom of it.
Yeah, the Monday after Thanksgiving is the first practice day for boys' high school.
Yeah. So I just wanted to share that with you. I sent, I typically don't, I did a court bullet to Scott and Dan because I knew that they might have been contacted by the time they even sent my email. So with that, we'll get.
You were the first email I got of this stuff.
I was?
Yes.
Oh, all right. So with that, and if possible, right after the meeting, I wouldn't mind talking just for one minute with Vince, new board member. Joe is here today, Russ and Andy. Because I'd like to maybe try and schedule a time within the next week or two for us just to have our own little board member 101 seminar for just 45 minutes to an hour, if you guys wouldn't mind. So if you have just a minute to try and see if we can fit that into our schedules here, rather than sending a flurry of emails, we'll just see if we can get that accomplished. But with that, we're ready for the action items.
Thank you. First thing, that's a good transition to the resolution authorizing issuance of certificates of election and directing the school district clerk to perform other election-related duties. It's a roll call vote. We have someone to make the motion.
I'll make that motion in a second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Roll call.
Nope. Yeah, sorry.
Okay, Andy Bertram.
Yes.
Dan Kater.
Yes.
Scott Kirkin.
Yes.
Lisa Hedin.
Yes.
Teresa Moles, yes. Russ Rola.
Yes.
Vince O'Brien.
Yep. And next up, a motion to approve amending the 2015-16 school calendar to reflect April 19th as a non-school day for seniors only due to the ACT testing.
Oh, I want to make that motion.
Do we have any discussion?
Popular with the senior class.
Told my son I was going to vote against it, but I was just teasing.
Just for the public purpose, one of the main reasons is that when we give the ACT test to juniors, there's a lot of parameters on how many you can have in a classroom at a time, how many teachers or proctors that you have to have with them. So by the time we would spread our junior class out to different rooms and then take teachers to proctor the test legally, there wouldn't be enough teachers left standing to teach the seniors. I suppose we could have given the freshmen off for another class, but I think it's a wise choice for the board to say the seniors. I also want to let board members know that there's a strong chance that the juniors on that day, we'd probably then leave early around 12:50. Because one of the problems we have then is the parameters are really tight. Like you have five minutes in between each test. You have like 15 minutes to eat lunch. It's just boom, boom, boom. So our teachers who are proctoring, they'd be doing the ACT all the way until 12:50. Well, then we owe them a lunch and we owe them a prep. And so as we owe all those teachers lunches and prep, we wouldn't have enough teachers again to probably be around for the juniors because all teachers will be covering the junior class from right away in the morning till like 12:50. And for most juniors, it's not a problem. They either hang around for sporting activity later on or they catch a ride home and the busing isn't an issue. So I'm guessing that that's probably what would happen with the juniors as well just because of our teacher contract, we wouldn't have teachers available, so.
Would we scrap this plan if for some reason we have a whole bunch of snow days or something this winter? And we're concerned with the number of.
Thanks for that question too. I would not scrap this plan. I think it's, if the state's going to pay for the ACT test, then we could administer it right here and all the juniors then don't have to be scrambling on a Saturday, which then gets in the way of, as we've heard, show choir and other performances. It's a great benefit to do it. What we'd probably do though, to make up the senior hours, is we have some type of coordinated community service where seniors then would have to go to a nursing home or have to go shovel somebody some snow or do something in order that they get their hours to graduate. So I just wanted, for the viewing audience, to hear some of the rationale behind it. And thank you for the motion and the second on the item.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Motion to approve several lees.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. And three resignations. So.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Motion to approve some retirements, some with some very lengthy years of service.
No motion.
One family missed 60, 70 years.
I know.
I'll second.
So we have a motion and a second? Any discussion? Thanks to the teachers, all those in favor?
Aye.
And Don. Sorry, sorry, Don.
Just want to let you know that on the side note, and I don't think Don would mind me sharing this. He told me that on the 4th of March, he will take me out for supper so he can tell me what he really thinks of me.
I'm a Missy.
And I said, hey, for a steak, I'll let it go out. But for those of you who know Don, you can just picture him in a brief crossing in the hallway of him saying that to me.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
We already did vote in there.
Okay. So we have four hires, one of whom just resigned. Anybody to make that motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. And a reassignment.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. And a motion to approve reinstating Tom Fuchs to the position of custodian.
Chair, I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Couple of other meeting dates coming up, the high school lunch and December's board meeting, which is also the truth in taxation meeting, right? That's December 9th at 6:30. Any other business? Motion to adjourn?
So move.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.